Back from my. Call to order. Notices hereby given in accordance with General Law thirty-nine, section twenty-three A, that a regular meeting of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority will be held on Wednesday, July twenty-third at six P. M. The meeting will be held at two fifty-five Essex Street, first floor, Lawrence, Mass., oh-one-eight-four-zero, pursuant of Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty-twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law thirty-eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteen, twenty-twenty, order imposing strict limitations on a number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the LRA is also being conducted by remote participation. Members of the public attending the meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by use of the following link below. Call to order.
I'm okay. I don't know. Present.
Present. Okay. The Executive Director's report, please.
The. I have asked the city attorney. Do you yesterday to view one of the. I think it's charter. What was the charter number again? There's a charter that that include an industrial development financial authority to look into the matter as a tool besides the opinion of James Carras. And I would like to give James Carras just a brief moment as he made some comments in terms of his email that he sent.
Yes, James, you there?
Is he on the phone or?
Sorry, I was muted. I I am here.
Okay, James, can you please give your opinion in regards to the Industrial Development Financing Authority? I know that you sent it an email today. And I would like you to whether read it or just summarize what your opinion is.
Sure. So an industrial finance agency in Massachusetts, it's it is a quasi-public municipal entity that cities and towns can create. The purpose of the Industrial Finance Agency, it's within its name, is to finance and support industrial development. It can be manufacturing, commercial, mixed-use real estate projects. And what they do is they use tax-exempt or taxable bonds. So the. My understanding is Brian did some research and discovered that there is an industrial finance agency in Lawrence that has been established, which is a good thing because if you decide to do that or the city decides to do it, they would have to get city council approval. So it sounds like you already have one, but it's never really been activated. Again, the eligible projects typically are manufacturing or processing facilities, commercial development, nonprofits such as hospitals or schools are 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 key. The. The the way the financing works is that they could be done with, one, a general obligation bond, but the general obligation bond has to be approved, my understanding, has to be approved by the voters. Two, you can do a TIF or a tax increment bond, which I believe has to be approved by the city council. Then finally, the most popular one is a revenue bond that is established with the borrower, and I don't believe you have to go through city council to do that, but the revenue bond is probably the most common use. And the general obligation bond is typically for larger projects such as schools or major infrastructure improvements that the municipality is interested in. But in summary, this is, I think, an important tool in the municipal toolbox to handle urban redevelopment. And you you may want to consider in terms of activating it in getting the mayor to appoint members to the finance authority. I I again, I know that Brian has done the legal research on this, and you may want to comment as well.
Yeah, I've requested through you, Mr. Chair, I've requested the city attorney to look into it. To my understanding, the city council already voted on it. But it is, I've spoken to also Tim, Tim Woodton, our city attorney, to give his opinion. And we're gonna have discussions tomorrow. The reason why I'm bringing it up is because we're trying to be proactive, because there was already a need for it.
Right.
It seems that one way or the other, the city previously have really done some of the homework in identifying our sitting mechanisms in place for redevelopment to happen, because this is also part of redevelopment. So we already have a Lawrence Redevelopment Authority. Members, it needs to be a different member. I mean, board. As you know, I don't think the charter allows for, the city charter doesn't allow for for members to serve in one or more boards.
Right, right.
However, it's conflicting to the state law. So that's why I would like you to review it and get it with him. And then we can bring it before the city council if it's necessary. If it's something that we could do, I'm looking at a possibility that that both the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority can assume part of the responsibility because it's duplication of work. And then you have separate boards doing making separate decision. And if the state law allows under these circumstances to have, let's say, the LRA board also be part of this board or integrated one way or the other, then then we can have the, you know, the mayor presented to the city council as part of it. If it doesn't, then you need to look at the legality.
But at least you know what I am. So so a question, would that be, in essence, a subcommittee of the LRA or just an additional responsibility of LRA members?
Well, we don't know so far. It needs to be reviewed by by.
It's designed to be a separate board with similar appointment rules that that this board operates under, except that in this particular case, all five members are appointed by the mayor, subject to city council approval. For an LRA, there's one seat that is supposed to be appointed by the governor and the other four by the.
Okay, understood.
So it's. We'll see. It's it's going to require the mayor to make a decision that he wants to activate that authority and then make a decision on who he wants to be members of that authority. And if he wants the LRA members to be basically assuming that rule, then that would have to go before the council. They might have to vote on it, make some exception to the normal rules. Otherwise, you'd have to appoint new members, like not not you folks, but five new citizens of Lawrence to be members of that other authority, which could work along with the LRA. So there's a lot, lot to, there's a lot involved.
Yeah, I want to to read it, though, within the record, established. So it's established that the city council declares that an industrial development financing authority is needed in the city and that unemployment are the threat, therefore exist in the city, and that security against future unemployment and lack of businesses, of business opportunity is required in the city, and that unemployment are the threat thereof can be alleviated, or the security against future unemployment and lack of business opportunity can be provided by attracting new industry to the city or substantially expanding industry existing in the city through an industrial development project or projects financed on the under and pursuant to the chapter, to chapter forty D of the Massachusetts General Law enacted as chapter seven, seven-two of the Massachusetts Act of nineteen sixty-seven. The city council determines that there is a need for such an authority, and in making this determination, the city council has taken into consideration the city's ability to adjust to any expected increase in the demand of four municipal facilities and services as a result of the expected increase in employment and business activity from such industrial development. And quote. So. This is an important tool for us to at least have discussions with with the with the mayor and also city council. Furthermore, the. I don't think I don't have anything other than to report which would be, you know, one of the items that I wanted to report is for your vote tonight, which is item two and ten. But we can wait for that for us to discuss that item when it comes before you.
Okay. Thank you. We have the proposed award of a one-time scholarship to the summer intern from the Boys and Girls Club partnership. This was the. Think we discussed this already, isn't this so Marisol from the Boys and Girls?
So the previous meeting, you guys had discussed potentially providing a scholarship to the intern. The one-time scholarship. For his work.
Yes, I believe we did.
Yep.
Did we have an amount?
I mean, the amount that that is paid is normally the minimum wage. And during his summer program, I believe, is twenty-four hours.
Right, so for X number of weeks, for X X amount of weeks. We have to vote to approve that specifically, like? What is?
I think so. I mean, it's.
Brian, what's minimum wage for?
I think it's fifteen dollars.
Change?
Yeah, I can check it up right now.
So we approving a scholarship or we approving a salary for?
It's.
Two months or one month.
It's a stipend and.
Or stipend.
In in such, it was a, is that appropriate word for that, Brian?
Well, who who employs the?
He was.
Employed?
No.
His unpaid internship. We talked about this, unpaid internship.
And and who's he working for?
He's, it's a.
It's, you mean the individual that is working right now?
It's at the.
Yeah, I mean, he's working with the with with us, but he's he's paid by the Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, the Boys and Girls Club is paying them? Oh, but he's going to school. I I wasn't the impression that he wasn't going to pay him. We were going to give him a stipend.
I mean, that was the request.
Right.
I forgot who made that request.
Well.
Sounds like that's something I was, uh. You remember that?
The the request was.
Is this a high school student or college student?
High school.
He's already worked.
College?
Yes.
Working for the Boys and Girls Club?
Well, he's working for us through an internship program through the Boys and.
Through a summer program, probably, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Marisol has information?
Yes.
So we use the word scholarship instead of stipend? And then did we discuss an amount?
No, because he's going, he's going to go to school. He's going to college.
That's why we call it a scholarship to help him out with his school, with the work that he's doing. How long is he gonna be with the LRA helping out? The summer is three weeks.
Yeah. Again, it was essentially not that he worked.
We need an amount to decide.
Yeah, just, yeah, scholar, I like the idea of a scholarship.
Scholarship to buy his books.
That's why you're on the end of the table, so that we use the correct language.
To buy his books.
Yeah, let's help him buy his books and help him.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
I like that. Can I get a motion to that effect?
Fifteen hundred, why not?
All right, can I get a second? Roll call.
Better than that. I'm Medina.
Hi.
Motion carries. We're gonna, we're gonna give a scholarship of fifteen hundred dollars to this young Laurentian going to college. I love that. Look at him, Laurentian.
College of.
Which school? I thought he was gonna go to. I I mean, we talked about this. Yeah.
I wasn't here.
I thought he was.
And I'm old.
You're old.
Yeah.
All right, we're on to number two. Review of application received for the vacant LRA board position and discussion of next steps.
Well, we have, we advertised for, I think, twelve or fifteen days.
Yes.
We're gonna have to recruit for a new board member. We see the only one application.
Makes it tidy. Courageous.
Courageous.
Courageous applicant is here with us and is known to all of you. His name is Carlos Matos. And I'm happy that he also applied. You have his application within your packet and also his resume. Our attorney requested the inclusion of this address because that was missing or that needed to be modified, which he did. Mr. Carlos Matos brings a wealth of experience. He currently serves deputy superintendent in the Lawrence Public School System. I think he has come to me during several previous meetings when we had with all of you, the board. He brings a wealth of expertise, and I would make, highly recommend the board to approve his his application and also his candidacy.
Is that approved, approved on our part? Does it have?
Yeah, well, is that approved by the mayor? I had discussions with the mayor. I could provide you with a letter that I can. Coming. And in this case, it would be according to our bylaws. It is the board that is serving the remaining, the remaining term of. Sarah Perez.
Ah, right.
So you think he doesn't need mayor approval?
No, mayor, he, okay, yeah, the mayor spoke to me about.
So the board's gonna recommend to the mayor that Carlos be appointed right away?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Like, as in right away, if we do this, can he vote tonight?
He can vote today, but the next, the next meeting he go.
Okay, but you say he. What do you mean he?
Carlos Matos.
Ah, no, I thought he, because we're not sending it up to the city council meeting, which is a normal process, and the mayor makes a recommendation.
Right.
We're we're boarding him in because Sarah Perez has a term that expires next year.
The board cannot vote anybody in without the mayor. Mayor recommended him.
Yeah.
Mayor has to appoint the member. The member has to be confirmed by the city council.
I don't think that's what the bylaws says.
No, Marisol, can you pull them up? I didn't bring my laptop to you.
I like them.
Just to finish.
Yeah, no, I mean, I wish, I wish that was the case, but I do not believe that there's.
That's the problem.
But I'm gonna bylaws, and I checked also the city ordinance, and those are the things that we need to look at. I heard everything. I searched it up, and that was not the case.
Okay.
So.
Oh, actually.
Yeah, please look it up.
So that's the case, where it would have votes today? I don't know. That's what I'm trying to get.
I thought it's different. I thought it's a vote tonight.
We can approve on our end, and if there's another clarification that needs to happen, that's out of our hands anyway.
Can't see too much.
I still can't see.
Those are just officers amongst the membership. So Marisol, pull up if you don't mind.
Was she? No.
Anna's just.
It's just a.
Actually, I thought you were a treasurer.
No. She was not.
Find her to be a treasurer.
I've been recorded. Put my glasses back on. There you go. Well, Carlos, you have a very good chance because you're running against yourself.
Community engagement. Unless I'm mistaken.
No, no, no. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get past serpent renewal.
What do you think? Yeah.
Sure. That's a bad point.
Far to get away. Far to get away.
On the basketball.
That was a wrestler. Yeah, I was a wrestler. I was a terrible basketball player.
But my throws down is a good one.
He does, he does.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's still got my wish.
He's tough. Terrible. That's a good bowler.
First.
Something I wish I had been better at.
I used to work there.
Yeah.
Always. There's lots of shenanigans you don't get into while you're.
What you're playing against.
Yeah. Gravity.
It was Michael Park. I loved it.
And I used to, I used to be a speed skater. Really? State. What was it, Eric Hayden?
I know Eric, Eric, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I used to skate with.
Yeah.
I mean, Darrell.
Yeah.
He was a good figure skater.
Yeah.
I was a speed skater.
Yeah.
Where you roll.
Yeah. Nice. I know that the the skaters in the one time, they ride the bike massive.
Where?
Exercise, I remember Eric Hayden, he.
Yeah.
Rode a Schwinn. Yes. My legs just. Kind of things, I still got my chipping keys. Still got them in the bag. Uh, do we need to take a recess?
No, no, I I mean, I just want to get the language. I mean, I know, I know it to be the case, but since vacancies, other than by reason of expiration of terms, which applies in cases, shall be filled for the balance of the unexpired term in the same manner and by the same body, except elected members in town, which does apply here. So in this particular case, it's it's gotta go through the mayor. It's just gotta go through the mayor, and then the city council gets to gets to vote on it. So can't just.
Okay, so so we'll do that. So that this.
Yeah.
There's. There's no objections from any of the building of board, so, you know, it's out of our hands.
So you can make a recommendation to the mayor that that Carlos Matos be be appointed and that, you know, as soon as humanly possible, you know, confirmed and so on and so forth.
Can I get a motion to that effect, please?
Motion to send Carlos nomination to the mayor and give him as soon as possible.
Right. Can I get a second?
A second.
Roll call.
I'm Medina. I'm.
Hi.
Better than that.
Hi.
Eric Walker.
Hi, welcome aboard, tentatively. No, thank you.
Yes.
Item number three, Urban Renewal Plan Update, Community Engagement Activities.
I wanted to present, just for information purposes, and I'll be. I'd wanted to update you on our process for updating the Urban Renewal Plan, which we'll be doing for pretty much the remainder of this year. And I wanted to share with you the community engagement process. If you bear one moment, I will pull up my PowerPoint. If I could get permission to share my PowerPoint? Thank you. Again, I wanted to share with you the community engagement process of the Lawrence Urban Renewal Plan, our major amendment. The statutory and regulatory engagement requirements for Massachusetts law are pretty specific and also demanding, and I say that only in a positive way, of a of a very robust citizen participation process. We're required to complete a citizen participation report, which will document participation during the preparation of the plan and describe all of the engagement during implementation. We also will need to hold a public hearing and provide an adequate notice, and we need to obtain a planning board determination that, once the plan is done, the major amendment aligns with the comprehensive plan. The plan will need to be approved by the city council as well. And then finally, we'll have to submit it prior to submitting to the Office of Livable Communities and Housing. We need to notify the Mass Historical Commission of the hearing. So we are engaged in making sure that we document everything that we do relative to citizen participation. The overview of our engagement process during the summer, we are doing key stakeholder interviews. During the fall, we will reconvene the Citizen Advisory Committee and have a workshop with them. We'll have a series of public charrettes and open houses, as well as a public survey. Little more detail on that. Our strategic stakeholder interviews, which several members of the board have participated. We have identified over forty key stakeholders that we want to interview during the summer. We've completed eleven interviews, more scheduled for August. We've included local and state elected officials, city staff, particularly planning, the school department. I met with the superintendent yesterday, community development, economic development, other key city staff, the LRA board, as I mentioned, leaders of nonprofit organization, business leaders and developers. And we document all of these interviews to show that we have informed consultation on the plan. In the fall, we'll re-engage the Citizens Advisory Committee and have them do a workshop on the updating the Urban Renewal Plan. In addition, we will have a number of public charrettes in the evenings, as well as a open house on a Saturday, so the public can join in in terms of participating and providing feedback on the plan. We have completed a survey that we are ready to release. Uh, we, uh, have completed a survey that we are, uh, ready to release and post. We'll work with the city, the, uh, LRA's webmaster to get that posted. Um, and it'll be, uh, in English and, uh, we, we're working on getting it translated to, to Spanish as well. Uh, we're hoping to get everything done by the end of the month. That survey will stay on, uh, both the LRA and the city website, uh, up until probably the end of the year because we anticipate a four to five month process to get through, uh, the plan. Uh, there is a digital platform called Co-Urbanize, uh, that can help us collect, uh, further input and facilitate community engagement. So we're exploring the use of, of other social media and, uh, digital tools to help us, uh, with the citizen participation. Uh, we want to launch an email newsletter, uh, dedicated to, and, uh, dedicated webpage on the LRA site to share updates. Uh, it's important as we get feedback that we get that feedback back to the, uh, those that are providing it. Um, and, uh, particularly from the citizens, uh, the CAC workshop and the citizen, uh, meetings that will be held. We want to post regular progress updates on social media and city newsletters. Um, and we want to, uh, hopefully get, uh, some communion voices engaged in the process. Um, do some short, uh, videos with them and post that as, as well. And finally, uh, it is incumbent upon us and ultimately our subcontractor who will be with, working with us in the fall. Uh, Stantec is to document, document and document. Uh, we need to track and archive all meeting notices and agendas, attendance sheets, flyers, outreach materials, uh, photographs of sessions and, uh, written and verbal input summaries, uh, which we are doing now in the, uh, the key, uh, strategic stakeholder interviews that we're, we're conducting. Uh, I welcome, uh, your suggestions, uh, either tonight, and I know again, I've interviewed, uh, most of you, uh, one-on-one. Uh, or if there are follow-up ways that you think we should be engaging with the public, uh, please let us know. Uh, uh, particularly interested in any key stakeholders that you think that we should be, uh, interviewing this summer. Um, and, uh, and, and that, that's it on our citizens' participation plan, and thank you for your support.
Were there any questions? No. I mean, we have questions.
I like what we're doing.
Yeah.
We're getting a lot of feedback, we're getting the community involved and we're being, you know, you're being transparent with the information that, uh, is being put out there.
That's it, we're being transparent.
James, uh, I got one question for you. Um, what, what are, what's the current, uh, list of, of properties that we're, we're thinking of, uh, trying to include in the next, uh, next, uh, plan amendment?
We, we have a request that, uh, into the state and I'm trying to follow up, uh, see what, what feedback, uh, on, uh, two properties. Uh, and then there's a list of other properties, I don't have that in front of me, but there is a list of other properties that, uh, we decided was, we were instructed that to not submit as part of the minor amendment, and it will, we'll check back with the state on those, that list of properties and see whether we need to do that in the major amendment or will they accept the minor amendment. But we're trying to get first through these two properties that we submitted, then we can have a discussion on some of these other properties, and they can give us a direction whether it should be a minor or a major amendment.
What are those two properties, uh, Mr. Carlos?
Uh.
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna have to pull that up, uh.
Is that the Pemberton, Pemberton, not Pemberton Park, uh? Talking about the minor amendment? No, the two, one, the, the.
Fifty-five.
Two that he's adding now.
Because they weren't, they weren't included in the minor amendment.
It's that Summer Street.
Summer Street. They all holy rosary? We talked about that before.
That wasn't.
I think, I think that that's right, um, but they're in, they adding that, they all holy rosary on Summer Street.
Yes, that's another part, that would be in the second amendment. We get a request because the city hasn't done anything with it. So we can request to, for the LRA, for it to be included within a new district. I mean, within the, the new boundaries.
Right.
Correct? Uh, James?
That the major amendment or the next phase of the next, or major?
The next major amendment.
Okay. Yep.
Now, uh, I think I should add, um, another comment to this. The city is also working on a master economic development plan. Uh, it's gonna be a RFP, um, so to give you the opportunity to, to go through the competitive, uh, bidding process. And we don't know exactly, so we're waiting for that as well. So, so, you know, some of the information or, or findings in the economic development report or vice versa from the amendment and the studies that we're gonna do, may, may, um, may, uh, may impact, um, the work that, that James Dallas is gonna do. Correct? James?
Yes.
Sure.
Sure.
Yes. Um. Do we have anything else? Old business?
There are some items that we need to take off.
Uh, James, that you, did you talk about the timeframe?
The, the timeframe for the urban renewal plan?
Yeah.
Uh, we're hoping to get the city council, uh, by the end of the year. Uh, given that it's December, we'll probably have to be pushed that into January. So we'd get the plan done over the fall and then present to the city council in January, get their approval and we'll submit to the state. And then the state will review the plan at that point, and, uh, I, I assume we should be able to get a, a feedback on the major plan by, uh, February or March.
Okay, that's, uh, James, I would like to ask you for a favor, and this goes for, for, for our attorney as well, for Brian, that in this time around, we need to ensure the city council does it right. So if they're going to submit, uh, a, uh, an amendment, a major amendment, uh, to the urban renewal plan, they need to have, city council needs to pass a resolution with all the conditions that they believe that is necessary for the approval of the, of the, of the major amendment. What they were supposed to do with, with, with the, with, with the urban, with our urban renewal plan, indicating that city-owned properties, uh, that are outside the boundaries, right? Would have to go before the city council. In the first amendment, they stated that they took the recommendation of the urban renewal plan, and the recommendations were to transfer city-owned property to the, to the, to the LRA as part of redevelopment. That's page eighteen. And it says it's very clear. So this time around, if there's, we need to educate our city councilors that if they want to do, you know, put certain conditions to it, or if they want to exclude certain properties, they, that's the opportunity that they have to do so. Am I correct?
Definitely needs to be done.
As part of it.
Tighter this time around.
Yeah.
This time around, definitely it needs to be done.
Right.
Ab- absolutely.
Think so. Do we have anything left from the last meeting?
Um, there, there's some items that we want to take out of order within our business, particularly A and X. And I think Joel from, from the block. I knew you.
Oh, we had X.
X. A and X. In old business.
Uh, we're like. I think we approved the amendments with, to the bylaws.
We did not.
We did not?
We did? Okay. Yes, I might apologize.
So, A, X, and what else?
X. So if we address A, I think we should just, we should consider X. And I know Joel is here from the, uh, from the downtown business association.
Ah, hello.
Right?
Well, that's the, we don't know if he's on the agenda.
No, no, he can do it, we can pull this, right?
But he's old business.
You're gonna do that as a report. Yeah, I mean, uh.
Yeah, of course we.
The matter wasn't moved into old business, but that's okay, we could certainly take it under, uh, under miscellaneous reporting because the board already voted on the, uh.
Right.
Grant.
Right.
Grant.
So just getting a report, I think, from Joel and, uh.
I think we can hear your report.
The, the last conversation, the, the last meeting, there was, uh, question regarding funding and additional funding. So, I believe that was the conversation we had, right? Uh, so I was, we're waiting to hear on, uh, if additional funding was approved. If not, then we know what we have to work with.
Okay. Additional funding from us? Yes.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna request an, an amendment, and I had the conversation.
Right.
Uh, with, well, first of all, with, uh, Johan, I had a conversation, I didn't have the conversation with you because you guys had, uh, a meeting with, with, with our attorney. Um, and I need to give you some background. Initially, the, um, the downtown association received three hundred thousand dollars under the thriving Lawrence brand. They have, uh, performed a wonderful job. You see all the baskets in the downtown, uh, as well as the lighting that we've been seeing. Uh, and, uh, the mayor requested the association to expand the basket. So first it was, I think, Common Street.
Right.
Around City Hall, but now you can see it, uh, in the, in the entire downtown. In addition to the flower, the, uh, flower pots, uh, they also have to maintain to, uh, water these plants, make sure that, you know, they look good. And the mayor has also requested the downtown association to expand, um, you know, the lighting. Uh, within, I think it was Common Street, I'm not quite sure, but they are gonna do more work. So when we initially spoke, uh, Johan and, and Rocky at that time, they, uh, they told me, uh, that they, they didn't know exactly how much funds they had because they had a, uh, uh, the Greater Alliance Community Action Council serving as an umbrella organization that is handling the finances because they are a five oh one C three, while they're looking for a, by five oh one C three status. Uh, I dealt with Susan Fink, um, they gave me a number, but then the, the numbers were not accurate. So, I told, um, Johan, or the association in this case, that we shouldn't have, uh, make money an obstacle unless we don't, unless we have a, I mean, unless we do not have a plan. Uh, there's a lot of work that been put into it. Uh, the purpose of this, this pilot project, let's, let's call it a pilot project, we changed the dates, was that the, uh, is to attract as much of our residents within the downtown area, all these apartment buildings that we're seeing coming out, but we need to entice them to come to in the downtown area, uh, for the purpose that also is linked to the work that the redevelopment authority is doing.
Yeah, makes sense.
Uh, you know, it's a four-point approach, it's organization promotion, uh, organization design promotion and, and work towards the economic vitality of the downtown. So if we have all these projects that are happening, um, and particularly in the downtown area, we have Common Street, we have a hotel that is proposed to come, we have another project on Essex Street, we have, uh, two other projects on Methuen Street, and we also have to consider the one in Pemberton Park as part of the downtown. Then, um, how is it that we're gonna fail? Uh, attract, sorry, attract new retail business within the downtown area. And so far, we've seen that there's been many investments, you're, you're actually one. Uh, we have Johan, that is also, uh, and, and the wife, that are investors. We've seen eleven, in the case of eleven, which now just was informed by Ramon that has a new proprietor.
Yes.
Right? And so it would be ideal to have a pilot project where we focus where the restaurants are. Uh, we already seeing what is happening in the town, in, in, around the park, filled with, with, uh, all these, uh, food trucks. Uh, and they're not paying property taxes, they're not paying, uh, the licensing that is, is required and the, the, the investment that some of our, uh, restaurants are, are investing in their property.
Is there any licensing involved for them to just park the food truck?
Is there? Yes, yes, there's permits that they, that they need to have to pursue, but nothing compared to what they, they're looking for.
Right.
Our restaurants in the downtown, they pay for a food license, they pay for liquor license, uh, and, and so forth. And also, uh, are under more scrutiny than some of these food trucks.
Right.
At the moment.
Especially since you can.
Right.
Put it in drive.
Exactly. So these pilot projects now, we have considered to do it in the month of September. Month of September is, uh, Hispanic week, I mean Hispanic month, heritage month. And in which we can, you know, couple that with an activity and the, I would recommend for the downtown to fill in the financial gap because it's part of the work that we're doing. Give, give the businesses the opportunity, but next year, then the association will work together with the, with the rest of the, the restaurants, and they have to put in some skin in the game and invest into the project. Ramon and I, we met with, um, Gordon Foods.
Sure.
Food, yes. And they are willing to bring a huge food truck, uh, and, and don't get scared.
No, no, no.
The purpose of the food truck is to see if we can, um, bring them in, uh, as part of their community service program, uh, together with another, a nonprofit organization, forgot the name of it. And the sole, the purpose is to bring, to, to have food for, uh, let's say, children. Because sometimes that could be more expensive for families that would be coming down.
They're also looking, so we met with Gordon Foods, they've stated, they're looking for a, uh, big, uh, tent.
Right.
Case it rains, if they can bring one in to have, if it happens. They, uh, a few months back when I spoke to them, I mentioned to them the idea of doing an activity in honor of, right, Louis was a friend and, uh, owner of Teraluna, and they said we'll provide the food for that. So they're open and willing to help out with what's happening here. They also, I don't remember the name also, of them, it's like a nonprofit that helps restaurants. That was mainly in Boston, that now is coming to the area because they're looking to target Hispanic, Latino-owned businesses.
So I believe that's the ML, MLR, that's just a lot of restaurants.
Yes. And they have a lot to offer, so they'll see how they can participate. I think they have a grant that they can also tap into, uh, to help with the event that's being planned with the, obviously, the idea of trying to engage the business owners and try to save them some money and save them on insurance and save them on a lot of different things.
Yeah, we're trying to attract also, uh, make it like a small job payers, right? With, let's say, aviation company that it can be present, uh, we have the, uh, another organization that focuses on the sailboats. Uh, they're trying to bring in also, uh, they're with other partners to recruit for Harbor Masters, um, as well as, um, other banks and financial institutions that we're gonna meet with as well to see if they can come in our downtown and, and work together with Mass Hire. So when people come in downtown, they can get information and support. But we're not bringing the other food establishments downtown because it would not serve its purpose. The purpose is that we don't have anything to do with alcohol, anything to do with food, and people can patronize the existing restaurants. Drink a coffee, La Grica, have a, you know, they have Eleven, they have El Vago, they have Teraluna within that same spot. So we'll do it within four weeks to see the activities. So the first activity, according to what I, I received from the curbin, was that we can just go, we have meet and greet uh, all the businesses within downtown, or people that, at least to educate them, give them information. Uh, all the businesses within downtown or people that, at least to educate them, give them information. Uh, Gordon Foods is gonna be there, then we will have, uh, I think it would be the sixth. Or the following week, three consecutive week that we will have all these events within the downtown area. At the start, it would be a four-hour event. Uh, we had discussions first, I wanted to be, for it to be only a three-hour. But then, uh, having conversations and those that know the business better. They said that, you know, you could do it at four o'clock, probably the community will show up at five o'clock and it's going to be just a two or, or three hours event. Uh, we have spoken with the fire department, the police department, since it's a partnership with the city, city is organizing and we get over the L R A. Then the um, the police department is going to cooperate with. For law enforcement officers, the fire department is also is gonna do that. Um, and. And the uh, and also the. We're gonna have an emergency, uh, like a triage spot within the downtown area, just in case depending of the heat. Or someone gets dehydrated or gets ill, that we can have at least water. Uh, and, and, and um the triage. Uh, available for, for patients. And that's would be the only area. So I think they're already identifying musicians. They have worked with the different cultural um organizations that are going to down, that, that would be downtown, but remember. This is something small. So that we can give them and we, you guys can critique your own, see what needs to be improved. Uh, and, but that, then the downtown association will be in charge. Maybe the next one could be also done with the city. Until you guys can do your own fundraising and be on your own.
How much are we talking about?
Uh, I think we, we propose eighty thousand dollars.
Additional.
As board approved, the grant of eighty one thousand.
Eighty one thousand, I think we should add an additional forty thousand because that's the number we spoke initially. And then you can reserve your funding for, uh, for next year. You need to capitalize, leverage your funds. Sell uh t-shirts, uh, do other type of fundraising that is necessary. You guys need to start organizing yourself.
Apply for grants.
Apply for grants. Yeah, I think um.
Do you, do you guys have uh office space? Like a, a place to work.
We don't have an official office space, so we usually end up meeting in front of the.
As part of our grant, can we allow them to utilize this space?
Yeah, there might be changes. That's something that I, I need to get, get clear um direction from the mayor, but. We're trying to, the school department has, you know, the adult learning center left, right, second floor. So there might be a possibility that this spot is gonna be utilized and then. Uh, Brian and I are going, are looking for another spot to house the, the L R A. If that, if, if the mayor decides that he needs this spot for, for inspectional services. I think this is gonna be inspectional services, second floor is gonna be. Community development because they're paying hundred thousand dollars as, as we are. But we have a plan, we have a plan that we're working.
Sorry.
And we don't wanna announce it publicly because we're negotiating. And what wants the deal is, is close, but I think you guys would like it.
Okay.
It's better.
It's not gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars.
Hopefully not.
Well, let me, let me, let me back off on my offers if I don't know what the hell I'm talking about.
But I, I would recommend to the board to add an additional forty thousand dollars to the budget, any additional expenses then.
So this will be for these four events that are taking place in downtown, ideally are projected on September.
On September.
Yeah, so it's eighty thousand plus another forty, which means a hundred and twenty one thousand, yes.
Hundred and twenty.
So initially, this project died a couple of months ago, obviously, it's a process. So the initial plan was to break it up into a couple of months throughout the summer. So I mean, we'd like to kind of look at that and maybe even consider one or two big events to really. Kinda, you know, showcase what we're doing and set it enough for next year. Possibly even one event, just because uh, one, one is the, the, the short timeframe in order to activate this. Number two is we wanna just make sure we go all out and people are just, can see what we're doing and hopefully exciting for next year. Make it easier for us to get sponsorships and things like that.
But the plan is still to do the four in September?
Well, I know what I was.
Right, three plus one, one activity to get. To basically for them to communicate with the rest of the downtown area. And what you guys are doing, they come in, in a nicer environment. And for them to bring, because it's not only food, you have.
We have food, we have entertainment, but, but again, just going back to the, initially, we're gonna do a series of four events. But we're thinking, just because again, short timeframe we have available, uh, maybe just do one big event this year. Kind of just go all out and showcase, you know, for next year.
Which is the one big event, it's just gonna be that.
Well, maybe not.
Well.
Yeah, not have a hazard, and that's what I'm gonna tell. Organize it well, because. You know, there's a chunk of money that we're gonna do it with well.
No, no, that's, that's.
And, and not for the sake of it, because and, and this is what I want to just make clear. Because it's a lot of pressure, a lot of time that we dedicate in this thing. We have people that are sitting here and coming. Uh, this is for your own good, as businesses, as a business association and for the businesses in downtown. This luxury, and I call it a luxury, but we see it more as an investment in a, in a downtown. When you have the opportunity, take advantage of it. And as entrepreneurs, uh, you know, you guys can sit down and say, hey, let's take action to this. What are we gonna do? You have people that are willing to help you and do some marketing from now, July, until next, it's what, two months? Two months from now, there's good promotions that could be done. You can also partner, let's say, the next year. Uh, I spoke to Steven, uh, Jill. Uh, they have done a marvelous job with the, with the food uh expo that they had. Uh, that could be something that you guys could think and then see how you could put your heads together and make something solid. But, but the purpose is for you to leverage those resources that you can. Um, uh, have additional funding. So this is not only about paying for service. I would, I, I would expect that you guys would have uh some sort of propaganda. You guys have a good name, C Lawrence. Uh, but have some t-shirts or something, sweaters during the winter that you could sell. During the event, cops or whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, fundraising will definitely be a part of it.
Right.
So Octavian, I, I sent you a, a grant agreement. So to be, once you tell me that that thing is good, so I'll send that over to Joel and Johan. Uh, I mean, the board's already voted.
Oh, okay. The amendment.
Well, that's different, that's different.
There's a difference, you need to vote on the amendment and then we're good.
Um, so, couple things, one, there's more islands in the Caribbean than the Spanish-speaking ones.
Yeah.
And I let a lot of stuff flow by because there's Antigua, Jamaica, a lot of other places. So we need to start using that language as well because those folks are here as well. Especially we're expanding our downtown. We want our downtown to be like, people don't mind jumping on ninety-three from Boston and shooting up here. It's all in our best interest. Um, can we entertain the additional funding as a, as a motion?
Yes.
Your motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call. Roll call. On the additional forty thousand.
Good, do the roll call. Pedro.
Aye.
Ramon.
Aye.
Um, Medina.
I bet I'm, I'm looking it up. Did you needed to put it in the agenda first?
So. Oh, yeah, did I do something wrong?
No, 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 you didn't do anything wrong. We, we, we took the matter, we took the matter uh off the uh miscellaneous uh reported.
Yes.
On the previous grant.
Right.
So if you're entertaining, and it sounds like you are entertaining and approving additional funds, we can still move forward. I already prepared a grant agreement. Right, we'll do a grant agreement for the eighty one five and then next meeting, get this on the agenda. And then by then, they're not gonna spend the full eighty one five if we now.
Right. Okay, so we'll, we, we already, we already, the, the large chunk of it we already did, we'll do.
Already approved.
We'll put on the agenda and approve it for the next meeting.
Once we get this grant agreement in place with, with uh Joel and Johan and his organization. We can start writing checks uh to pay for uh. Uh, expenses. So, and that's all spelled out on the agreement.
What?
They're not the five oh one C three, that you have to, the agreement between the five oh one C three. That's it.
That's not. That's not the case.
I think that's a fiscal agent, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not how the city does it.
It's any, it's any person or organization.
How close are you to getting your own five oh one C three too, just?
We're, we're in the works, so.
Good question.
Because um.
That's a process for sure.
Sure, but I think then, as we move forward, we want you guys to be.
Right.
Actually, we need a, we need a bit of a track record.
Yeah, so we're a fairly new organization and we're, we're, we're still the process of creating that track record, so probably have. We have something, but I think now, especially with this event coming up, I think now going forward, make it.
Sounds good. I think it's in everyone's best interest for you to have a setup because as, as you become somewhat independent. To be able to raise funds and apply for grants, you're gonna need to have. And to take advantage of your own good track record. Exactly, you need to have that put together. Sounds good. All right, well, you have, you know, you have ours.
Thank you. All right, so we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, just to get the, the, the vote of the additional forty. But in the meantime, if Octavian gives me the approval, I'll send the grant agreement over to you guys tomorrow. You can go back to me on that. I mean, it's pretty boilerplate.
Right.
They didn't make it up, uh, you know, used other.
Where you go, do you have, you have a card or something?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
I'll get it, I'll get it from my.
Yeah, I'll, these guys have my number. And, and just so the board is aware, basically, we had a nice meeting, a lot of back and forth. Uh, with the guys from Town Library that are proposing to do a lot of legwork, guys who are here.
Yep.
Basically, the way this is gonna work, because uh the downtown association no longer is gonna be participating financially. That they don't have the money. Um, basically, the L R A is essentially the bank. These guys are the board.
Got it.
And then they're gonna hire the consultants.
Okay.
We're not gonna have any contractual arrangement with anybody other than the downtown association, so. Things go awry and people are bitching and complaining, I'm my French, they're gonna be complaining to these guys. Um, we're just providing the funding uh based upon their submission of invoices to us. Uh, I'm gonna help them with the legal side of things, with contracts. Permitting and licensing as needed, Marisol will write the checks and we'll do the bookkeeping, all that stuff, so. That's, that's basically how this is gonna work. All right.
So once the grants approved, which one was approved, they tap into that grant that's there, they don't have to come to us to approve those invoices every time, right?
Uh, Joel uh submits an invoice to us with a certification, this is. Okay, that's it, that's all.
It was very simple, it was a lot simpler than you.
And it makes it easier for these guys because they have to jump through more hoops.
Right, and more time constraints.
They have a fiscal uh overseer or whatever the terminology is. So, so it, it's really gonna help expedite the process, uh. Now, they won't, I mean, um, because we're, we're, we're paying for everything.
We are that.
All right.
You're good.
Guys, thank you so much.
Looking forward to the event.
Me too.
All right, guys, have a great day.
Take care, Joel.
I was wondering where the food came from.
I, I wanted to mention one thing, and I don't know if it's appropriate to mention now, but I'm gonna forget, I mentioned it during the special meeting about um. And you told me to mention it.
Yeah, you did.
I feel there's three phone calls from three different um developers about the idea of paying for a appraisal. That will become obsolete the moment that it's used to determine a pricing matrix for the properties in question. So they're wondering if it still has to be a condition because one, it's becoming very difficult, um. It's, it's gotten, it's gotten, it's gotten quite difficult to procure um some of these appraisals. And two, there are reservations because of the status of the properties to continue investing time and energy and money into this process.
So I think we need to go to take one of these organism items. Off the table, but. Um, why don't we do that first?
We're gonna take that.
Um, which order you guys are taking things out of?
They wanna discuss the uh urban renewal plan and um. The requirements that are being set uh for the developers to uh obtain appraisals.
And, and um, we, well, we, we wanna discuss that, but more, but I, I also wanna discuss the uh. The L R A executive director's position in the contract, which I believe wasn't voted on in the last meeting.
Oh, I know that there was question, that's the chair. Because I had, I was in another meeting. That you guys had in regards to the template that I provided. So, whenever, whatever item we're gonna do starts down, where's item?
None of them. It's just gonna go straight down there.
I don't see.
Yes, not there, the one that you're talking about, it's not there.
It was, it was old business, item X.
Yeah, item X.
Right, that's what it is now, but he's looking for one that is um. The one that he just said.
The, the, so that's not part of old business, that's neither old nor new. That was something that came up, so I don't know if we should include it as part of the next, as part of the agenda.
You can put it in the next agenda.
In the next agenda.
You can put it in the next.
Basically, what we should do going forward is uh. Any, any new business item that gets discussed, it should move into old business. So that basically the old business list could be like three pages long.
Gotcha.
Uh. That way, anything that we've ever discussed could be uh tabled and then brought back off the table at any time. So. Yeah, I don't see. The law here on the old business, so.
No, it, 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 it wasn't ever approached, it was just something that happened like last week.
Okay.
Maybe uh ten, maybe seven days ago, six days ago.
Okay. Do we have anything else? Sorry?
No, we have, we have the item that he requested concerning the executive director, you, you asked.
Yes, I, I definitely wanna take that, I wanna take that um. Uh, please, the, that is, yeah, because I know we discussed it, but it wasn't uh. We didn't vote on that.
I think there were a couple of questions, and that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
And not necessarily have a vote.
So there needs to be a motion to uh, uh, take that, uh, item X, uh.
Can I get that motion, take item X out of old business, bring it up?
Yeah.
You got it?
I will uh.
Second.
Entertain the motion, say that.
All right. Made and properly second, can I get a roll call?
I don't know, you know?
Yes.
Uh, favor the how.
Yes.
Eric Walker.
Aye.
So, so Mr. Chair, the, I know the, there were questions. That were raised in regards to, just for clarification, I think I know you had a couple of questions. At that time, you remember?
I don't, I am, I'm being very sorry.
Yeah, just to give a background, it was a template that was proposed because. If you're gonna have an executive director, whether in the future, in their future, tomorrow, whatever it is. Uh. Uh, I've looked at different contracts, and that's the reason why you don't have a number, a particular number.
That's right.
Um, that comes with it. And Brian, I, I have a question for you. The. Uh, a salary that comes with it, based on the work that we will have. Does it, the, the, is it stipulated by the state?
Uh, no, however, um. There, there is a question whether uh contracts over a hundred thousand dollars per year uh have to be reviewed by the state. For a housing authority director, they do. Uh, every contract uh over a hundred thousand has to be approved by the state. The statute is silent on whether an executive director for redevelopment authority. So if you remember correctly, when we were talking about stipends way back when.
Correct.
Didn't say anything about redevelopment authority, but it had some language about housing authority members and stipends, so we kinda used that as our, sort of, template.
Right.
It probably would make sense if, if, you know, before hiring an executive director, entering into a contract to.
To, to clarify that?
Run it by the state.
Right.
Um. Like the statute doesn't say.
All right, so that was basically it, to have a template. For it, and then when it's available, that could, that could be negotiated. With the potential director.
In a compensation package, basically.
No goal necessary.
Yeah.
Right.
Retiring people act.
Yeah.
We should get the information ahead of time, so that we don't have to go.
Right, but I remember. Yeah, we can stop it.
Thank you, sorry, really.
No, no, I, I remember, I just. That's what I was thinking that it was.
You're going to work.
Yes, because we, we.
That, at least I perceive it for next year, that you will need, you will need someone dedicated to that business.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
A lot of questions before.
So then those questions come up. No worries, thank, thank you, Terry.
If anything else, oh, Ernie's here to do the report, the financial report?
That's all, Ernie's here to present the financials.
Okay. Ernie, are you ready?
Hello, hello, everyone.
Ernie.
I hope everybody's okay, and you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Very loud and clear.
All right, beautiful, all right. So, um, I'm here to present right now, June two thousand twenty-five profit and loss of financial statement. Uh, there was no income, we have some expenses, advertising and promotional, three forty-three. Contract labor, admin services, three thousand six forty, with fifty, Boris Tippin. Uh, two thousand seven oh eight point thirty-two, for a total contract labor of six thousand three forty-eight eighty-two. There's a copier list for two sixty-nine forty-eight, legal and professional, accountant services, one thousand, consulting services, five thousand three twenty-one fifty. And legal services, fifteen thousand, for a total legal and professional of twenty-one thousand three twenty-one fifty. We have a meals, it looks like it was a reimbursement, or four fifty, we got a miscellaneous expense of one sixty, there's a dispute. Uh, going on in that particular spend, so that will probably be down to zero, uh, going forward. Uh, office supplies and software, uh, that is one eighty-five twenty, and transportation expense is four oh five. Uh, we have utilities, uh, electricity for eighty-one eighty-four, gas for one seventy-three seventy-six. And there's a security camera expense of nine thousand eight twenty with twenty-five, for a total utilities of ten thousand seventy-five with eighty-five. Total expenses for the month is thirty-eight thousand six fifty-eight. Uh, there's an interest earned on the account of seven thirty-five, so that reduces to thirty-seven nine twenty-three point eighty-five. When it comes to the balance sheet, as of June thirtieth, we have the bank account ending ninety-three zero one of two hundred and fifty thousand. We have a Bank of New England shadow account, ending on ninety-three zero one, uh, one million two sixty-six three eighty-three point thirteen. And we have the citizens' urban renewal ending in eighty-six forty-eight for forty-nine thousand five oh five eleven. Total on the bank account, total asset is one million five sixty-five eight 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 point two four. That's total asset liabilities, we have opening ba- balance equity of four fifty-seven three eighty-one fifty-nine. Retain earnings, thirty-nine thousand one oh four point zero seven, for a net income of one thousand, uh, one million sixty-nine. Four oh two point fifty-eight. Total equity is one thousand five sixty-five eight 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 point two four, so those two match perfectly. And statement of cash flow, net income negative thirty-seven nine twenty-three eighty-five. Adjust them to reconcile net income to net cash provided by operation, thirty-seven nine twenty-three. So cash at the beginning of the period was one million six oh three eight twelve zero nine. So cash at the end of the period is one million five sixty-five eight 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 point twenty-four. And the other transactions are, you know, unique transactions that are after that report. That explains each one of the transactions that were performed during the month, any questions?
Will you message here, if the board doesn't have a question, I should have.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Ernie?
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
I'm doing great, good to hear from you.
Now, likewise, likewise, um, there's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant for. I don't know if we, I think we told you, at least the board was at war, with thirty-five thousand requesting reimbursement. How is that reflected in your, in your balance sheet?
Um. There was a reimbursement back?
No, 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 it's forthcoming.
Oh, it's forthcoming, okay, yeah, no, we have to see it, uh, so just let me know when it's there, and I will reflect it for sure. Is approved, uh, I did not have that information, uh.
It's gonna be reflected in it, so we, whenever we get reimbursed. It, I mean, it depends on how Ernie wants to do it. But the thing is, if someone asks us, you know, how many grants do we have?
Uh huh.
We don't know. How can we include it, so it could?
Oh, the, you know, every time there's a grant, I mean, there's a transaction posted, so we can very easily search for those, I mean, uh. He hasn't been that many, so just let me know what you need, and I'm able to provide any detail or general information, I'm happy to do that for you.
What did you say?
Um, Ernie?
Yes.
Are you gonna look in the book, cash or accrual basis?
I believe we're doing on a cash basis, but, uh. I'm happy to, uh, change the accounting if we need to, I mean, it's in cash basis, the money that's there. It's what we're reflecting, when it's accrual, we can post things that are forthcoming, but, uh. I mean, if you guys think that it makes more sense, uh, go accrual basis, we can do that. I mean, I'm happy to, to make adjustments, normally when it's cash basis, it stays like that, but, uh. I'm happy to reflect any amount on the balance sheet. Uh, just let me know, we can take this report and basically, uh. Tailor the reports to your convenience, these are the reports.
So then I have a, a question, James, I saw an email that we have to add additional information for the reimbursement, I think it's thirty-eight thousand or something.
Um, we, we submitted to the state for the housing choice grant, which is the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant that you, uh, indicated. The grant a- uh, agreement was signed on April fifteenth, so we're able to bill April fifteenth to June thirtieth. I submitted on Friday the documentation that was needed, however, I included five percent administrative. I read the regulations, and it said that we could charge up to five percent administrative. The state came back and said, no, you only can charge the administrative on the consulting or legal side, in other words. Uh, Brian's invoice, my invoice, uh, the, uh, infrastructure consultant invoice, if we added five percent administrative, then it's reimbursable. Your LRA's administrative cost is not reimbursed. Bottom line is, I had to readjust the invoice to reflect that, and instead of getting forty-one thousand five hundred, we're now getting. Hopefully, I, I submitted the correction today, thirty-nine thousand. Uh, this is the first time that I submitted for reimbursements, but moving forward, I think we will be in much better shape in terms of. Uh, getting invoices in, and, and, and the format that the state wants. So the bottom line is, is that you should be receiving thirty-nine thousand, uh, and change, that's what I submitted for the reimbursement for quarter two of this year.
Okay, um, so where is, uh, can you, uh, make me aware of some of those things, maybe include me on the email, or? Uh, um, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I, I would be more than happy to do so, I did, I need all the support I could get, so. Uh, yeah, I, I'm not an accountant, so, uh, but I figured it out, and, uh, you know, got the invoice in there, but I think we, we should be pretty straight now.
All right, awesome, yeah, anything that you need, let me know, that way, I'm aware, you know, the board is aware, and we can. You know, leave the meeting all happy, and that everything was inclusive and discussed, yeah.
That's important, I agree.
Thank you.
Quick question, Chair, I'm getting old, man. Cameras, where do we install cameras, the ones that we install here, that we just pay?
Uh, we install cameras, we install cameras here, and we install cameras at the hydro unit.
Okay, the storage units.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions for me?
Look at that shirt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going on vacation to the Bahamas.
Puerto Rico.
Nice.
Thank you, guys, it's always wonderful seeing you and talking to you, and, uh, any questions, anything that you want me to detail differently, or. You know, we're happy to make the adjustments, so make sure everybody leaves, uh, with the information that they need, uh, real time, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Marisol, thank you, guys, bye-bye.
Sure. In that, um, meeting, I think, uh, was, uh. You thought Octavian mentioned that, uh. Taking a look at the inventory of LRA properties.
Yes.
Need to do some research.
Yep, yep.
I do, I did prepare a spreadsheet, I don't know if you wanna go through it tonight, given the, the hour, but I can circulate the spreadsheet, if Marisol could pull it up for me.
Can you, can you email it out to us?
I'll email it out to you guys, uh, just quickly, uh, this is a list of all the LRA own properties.
Did anything surprise you?
Uh, if the idea is to look to try to sell some, uh, LRA property, there are really only a couple of options. Because we have some, the LRA has some strange.
Odds and ends.
Like, for example, Marisol, pull up one of the Allen Street, uh, just go to the photos. The LRA owns the park, uh, over behind the Leonard School.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
The skate park?
Yes, yes, uh huh.
Um, that's just one photo, that's the basketball court, right next to it is the, uh.
Skate park, I'm very familiar.
Yeah.
Okay, so the LRA owns that, for some reason. Uh, obviously, we can't sell, the LRA can't sell that, I mean, that's the, it should be owned by the city, probably.
Are we maintaining it?
No.
Right.
We were managed by the school, right?
That's why he stayed there.
Well, managed by the school, which I believe the school is being cloaked, or used for something different, is that right, Octavian, the Leonard?
The Leonard, because the Leonard's our old building.
So that's just as an example, uh, you know, that's, that's on the LRA books with a lot of assessed value, but it's not like the LRA can sell it, make anything up.
Well, we can negotiate it, because the intent was to charge us here.
Okay.
Yeah, they have good ideas.
It can be a trade-off, it can be something, and we do have an agreement, a sign, right, that with the monies that we have. They're from the two million dollars, right?
Yes.
Back, right, so these could be considered based on the value, and we can discount it based on the amount.
There's, there's a few other properties, sort of like.
Yeah.
Landlocked parcels behind Essex Street and, uh.
What is that?
That's part of that, uh.
Oh, okay.
Park.
So that, that court is being used by the city?
Mm-hmm, well, that's, it's because it's adjacent to the school.
By the neighborhood, Leonard.
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
Um, so basically, what does.
If there's a liability, someone breaks a leg, who?
They've got graffiti on it, so.
Good question.
They stay there.
So what the LRA has, I believe, that's, um, potentially, uh, marketable. Is a unit hydro. And the property behind the, uh, Hafners, um, headquarters, which is International Way.
Oh.
Um.
Is that being used for parking or something?
I didn't get a good photo of that one, because I couldn't get a good vantage point for the drive back there, my daughter took all the other photos.
The boarding program was, that one, Brian, the boarding program was interested in it, and they couldn't do anything, because there's, um. The floor is contaminated, huh, it's, it's some contamination there too.
So I mean, if, if the board wants to take a look at this, an RFP on these properties, you can consider an RFP, but otherwise, the stuff like the. The Allen Street, the site that we just looked at.
Let me see, where the name is, the Allen Street, sorry, I don't see it.
That's, that's the park.
That's the, the.
Next to the, next to the.
See him, alley? Do we have alleys?
Yeah. No.
Um, still have the alley behind Dunkin' Donuts.
But that's the same one behind Dunkin' Donuts, right?
Did we have any, you've been on that?
He was gonna be talking to the butters. To see if they can come to an agreement where he can either have it right through, or each one of them will take a piece of that.
Yeah.
That, that alley.
Right, that side, right.
The LRA owns that portion of that parking lot, which is also the Leonard School, that's on General Street. Um, actually, like, that kind of stuff, it's just like, lingering from an old urban renewal plan.
Okay.
Um, you said in the, yeah, we should be.
That's right, they're to the hospital.
Based on a lot, we need to.
Do we own the whole, whole thing, or part of?
No, that's the, that's the one right next to the hospital.
Oh, I know it, yeah.
Yeah, I know it's that.
Part of the parking lot.
Part of the parking lot?
How do we own part of?
I don't know.
Yeah, we probably just own the whole thing.
Just so my mom, we could explain birthday cake to my brother.
Birthday. I'll send out the, uh, spreadsheet tomorrow and, uh.
Yeah.
Take a look at it and.
Okay, Chair.
Talk to what you guys wanna, if you guys have a sale.
Thank you.
We can discount it. We can offer the regular.
We could do a commercial.
But it's money.
We got parking lots, we got basketball courts, we got skate parks. Um, I did have something, I don't know if it fits, but, um, I was, uh, spent a lot of time in the hospital looking at our website. And, uh, the drawing of the chair, Eric Walker, looks nothing like me. Which upset my mother a lot, she's like, when, when you gonna get a picture taken? Cause the, cause the picture, it doesn't even look anything like me. So can we, um, can we get some, uh, get a photographer in and take some nice pictures of us?
John is the one that does the, um.
City Council meetings.
Oh, the, or we could do it in the mayor's office, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we do that, and then, since we're moving, I was gonna bring up the door, but I guess it's a non-issue now, is.
The door is, because the brake is gone.
The brake is gone?
Brake is gone, the electrician will get in there.
Uh, yeah, don't do it, because we're probably moving.
It's broke, I already checked it.
Yeah. Oh, invoices, thank you.
Any idea where we'd be going over?
Oh, invoices, you did, yeah, I, I, yeah, you asked.
Can we get the invoices? We have them.
We just had to Google.
Did you guys look at the invoices?
Yes.
We pay our bills?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to do that, please?
I didn't say mine.
Can I get a second, we have Anna?
Uh, for one second, I, I wasn't here last week.
Right.
Right.
No idea what the.
That's fine.
Twenty-five thousand dollar invoice for bill to City of Lawrence.
That's for the photographer, take her picture.
Yeah. Everybody want a Benny Burke?
Uh, yes, okay.
Benny Burke.
You folks remember that at some point, the, uh, remember was. You folks remember that at some point, the uh I remember it was last year. That we spoke about the music school, which was one forty seven, Hazel Street.
Okay.
And the mayor requested us to be involved. The architect is is waiting for the reimbursement of the. Of the uh. Maraman. Valley revolving fund. The total amount is twenty five thousand dollars. The the agency that manages the those funds is the O R Department, no, the O J.
I'm in justice.
I'm in justice, that's the B department.
The uh, not the O J, what do you call it? The Attorney General's Office, the A G's office. And uh we have signed, uh so far, there's a, the the city has been reviewing N D A. I think there's an agreement, but it's a process for it to go through. In order for for the architect to be paid the total amount of twenty five.
So is that money we're waiting for Grant to get back? But we need to, the architect needs to be paid in the meantime.
Yes, so I spoke to Mr. Benny Burr, he's been waiting for a while. We can front a portion of that money, half of it, uh ten thousand dollars, how much is it?
Twenty five thousand, no.
A total of twenty five thousand, but if we can pay half until the rest of the funding comes and then we get reimbursed. It's up to you guys.
But the.
Pending the reimbursement.
Pending the reimbursement.
Because he needs to get paid, this is from.
A year ago, and a while.
But the invoice is for twenty five, um Terry.
Yeah, the invoice is twenty five, but you know.
So he can wait a little longer.
Exactly.
Okay.
We gotta pay the man.
No, I know, but.
I don't know. It's up to the to the board.
What's the timeline on the grant being?
He's been waiting for a while.
Uh I don't wanna call a Neil, he just has surgery. But I think it's gonna take us like probably um.
Hey, this is since the last fiscal year, we just started a new fiscal year, that's gonna take another year. To come back, it's up to us, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just.
Yeah, it's gonna take, it take a few months.
Yeah.
Can we just pay the thing and just get get it back, like, are we?
I mean, it's up to the board.
I think that would be the responsible thing, unless we're not gonna get the, we're not, we're not gonna get the grant back.
Maraman Valley Revolving Fund, Fund, that had to do with the. So the funding needs to go specifically to design projects. Let's say, they have to fix the, what do you call it, energy savings windows. And uh heating or HVAC. And then, that's it. What 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 project was it, it was one forty seven. So the design was completely done.
Is that the old school?
City property, right?
Right, that's the old, oldest school, the old, right next to.
The senior center.
Yeah, 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 next to the senior center.
And it's a music school, oh, the uh.
Nikki Jam.
The Nikki Jam.
Right, well.
Alright, remember when?
Yes. And have have they started movement on that or no?
Well, you know, the mayor asked us to do, you know, to help with it. And we had legal discussions whether we could or not based on the fundraising. I know that Brian said, you know, what does the, how do we have to do with it? I mean, not do with it, and how can we raise funds? But then you look into it and that that is a, an activity that we can raise funds for that music school, correct? Right, we could, okay.
It's gonna take a while.
It's gonna take a while, but we, someone needs to initiate.
We can give him fifty percent also, and he's getting more.
Well, it shows good faith, fifty percent? And then we're gonna get the.
Couple of my bills, and we're gonna get him in three months, we pay him the rest.
Alright, make that motion, please.
And then that's gonna be our.
We're getting reimbursed for the whole thing, or we're giving him an upfront on something that he's been waiting for a while. Get him some money.
That bridge is gonna take three years.
Well, if you don't mind, let's do that.
Motion on the uh Bernie Burr invoice to pay him half and the reimbursement.
And?
And also invoice uh for the mini split solutions.
Right, and if if it takes another six months to satisfy that.
Then we'll pay the full amount.
And then we wait for the reimbursement. Maraman on the revolving account.
So, so that's my motion, and this invoice paid half, this invoice paid the whole thing, we discussed, it's not, it's been completed. Fully and it's working, satisfaction.
Brian was in there this morning also.
Alright.
Uh we got a, we got, we got a motion from, can I get a second? We got a second, can I get a roll call? Have uh have our support been paid?
Yes, everyone.
Okay. Can we approve the minutes?
Sorry.
Motion to approve minutes.
Can I get a second? Roll call? Do we have anything else? Can I get a motion to close? We got a motion, second?
Second.
Everybody say hi.
Thank you very much.